Good evening. We are ready to begin the meeting for the Carson Planning Commission. So good, you guys look so good. Wow, okay, I might need one of those uniforms or something so I can fit in. Welcome to our Planning Commission meeting. Thank you for being here. We will begin with the salute to the flag. I'm going to ask Commissioner Letitia Wilson if she will lead us in that salute.
Good evening, everyone, and place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have our secretary to please the roll call.
Madam Chair Thomas?
Here.
Vice Chair Diaz?
Here.
Commissioner Doc Dossel?
Here.
Commissioner Guerra is excused. Commissioner Huff?
Here.
Commissioner Infume?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Here.
Commissioner Monteclado is not here yet. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Now matters regarding oral communications for matters not on the agenda, the public may at this time address the members of the Planning Commission on any matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No action may be taken on non-agendized items except as authorized by law. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to no more than three minutes each speaking once. Madam Secretary, do we have any speakers for items not on the agenda?
We have none, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Oral communications for non-public hearing items listed on the agenda. The public may at this time address the members of the Planning Commission on any matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No action may be taken on non-agendized items except as authorized by law. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to no more than three minutes each speaking once. This is for items that are non-public hearing items, and they're listed on the agenda. Do we have any speakers for those, Madam Secretary?
We have none, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda would be the consent calendar. We have approval of minutes from February 25th, 2025. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay. Okay, so moved by Vice Chair Diaz and second by Commissioner Huff. Roll call, please.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item we have on the agenda would be the continuation of the public hearing, and this is regarding the 2025 ZTA-01 Carson Municipal Code Amendment Administrative Approval of Tentative Parcel Maps and Tentative Track Maps for condominium purposes. And so we will, again, open the public hearing and continue the opening of the public hearing. I do have two speakers. Did you want to, Manager, make any statement before we get right back into the public hearing?
I'll just give a brief recap of what this was regarding.
Thank you.
Currently, tentative parcel maps and tentative track maps are under the purview of the Planning Commission where they're not associated with the development. What this amendment is asking to do is allow tentative parcel maps and tentative track maps in association with condominium development to be approved at the administrative level. And once you close the public hearing, I have a... Actually, Ben, can I get my recommendation now? So, the proposed amendment ensures that the city will not violate state law and protects and streamlines housing development. It also helps staff to expedite quality development. Accordingly, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council approval of the proposed code amendment language highlighted in the attached resolution. And that concludes my recommendation, and we are here for the public comment.
Thank you very much. Madam Secretary.
For the record, Commissioner Monteclado has arrived.
Thank you. I do have two cards for speakers for the public hearing, continuation of the public hearing. The first speaker I have is Ray Lawson. Please come forward. You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. Mike working?
You have to turn it on, I think. The light comes on when you... There it is. It's on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. Once again, my name is Ray Lawson, and we are with the Western States Carpenters. We're here for the continuation from last month, the item here, and we ask, or we just consider that the Commissioners consider that the plan going forth is allowed to have labor standards. And what we mean by labor standards, we mean prevailing wage. We are the people that will be building the projects going forth. And in order to do that, we've got to have a decent livable wage. A lot of housing has been built in Carson right now, but a lot of times it doesn't include labor standards. It doesn't include prevailing wage. It doesn't include an apprenticeship. Apprenticeship means that when they start work, they can... A young person can leave Carson High and start work on some of these projects and then journey out to become a journeyman carpenter and make a decent living, be able to buy some of these homes that they're building, be able to add to the wealth, be able to include themselves in the wealth that they're building when they're building these condominiums and track homes and so forth. We believe that Planning Commission, if you don't have the authority, that the City Council of Carson can have the authority to add that to this item, add this to the final passing of this plan, and also healthcare, because the people, when they build it, they're going to get hurt. Their families are going to get sick. They're going to need healthcare, a decent healthcare, not at some public facility getting a second care, secondhand treatment. They need to get the best possible treatment that's out there because they're building these homes. So, we ask that you consider that. If you're not able to do it, then once it goes over to City Council, to Mayor Lula Davis Holmes and the rest of the City Council members, consider adding that and also local hires. Carson has a lot of young people that need an opportunity to be able to make a decent living, be able to make a fair wage, and this is an opportunity to do that if you include that in the plan for the future. So, thank you for hearing us out. Once again, our brothers and sisters came out here because we believe in it, and a lot of them are Carson residents, because we believe in prevailing wages, we believe in apprenticeship, and we believe in a decent healthcare for the people that will be building these track homes and condominiums. So, thank you for hearing us out.
Thank you. Next speaker we have is Kyle Patterson.
He's not here, he's running late, but may I speak?
You're going to... Yes, you may. Yes, you may.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is George Bocanegra. I am with the Western States Regional Council Carpenter, all these good-looking people here. We are here, I'm not going to repeat everything that Ray Lawson said, but I do want to let you know that we support by right, but we support it with labor standards. It's really important to us that whenever a city as progressive as the city of Carson, as you guys have been, supporting labor standards, we want to make sure that we include labor standards in the language that moves forward. I'll give you a really quick example, the beautiful project that happened across the street. I would say about 10, maybe nine years ago, there was no labor standards there. I worked for Labor Compliance back then, and we visited that project on a frequent basis due to activity that was going on on that project. I know we all have jobs to do, we don't have jobs to... We don't have the time to go and make sure that people are getting paid properly, and unfortunately, people are taken advantage of, and they did get taken advantage of on that project. With labor standards, we create a level playing field for everybody, and a good wage, Medicare, pension, and apprenticeship. So, thank you for your time, and have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. So, assuming Kyle Patterson has not arrived, is that correct? Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this time? Last chance, at least before us.
No, we're good.
Okay, well, you guys look great. Thank you for coming. Are there any other speakers? If there are none, then at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing. And then, Mr. Manager, you got your recommendation, but would you like to... Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I recommend approval.
Thank you. Okay, so, public hearing is closed. Thank you for your comments. At this time, the discussion will come to the Commissioners, to my fellow Commissioners. Do we have any questions, any comments, any statements that anyone would like to make?
Madam Chair?
Yes. Vice Chair Diaz, go ahead.
Yeah, with the speakers that are here this evening, I would encourage us to consider including language that covers those items that were articulated, labor standards, prevailing wage, apprenticeship, and local hire. I think it's imperative, it's important, that we take that into consideration. If it's not within our purview, request that the City Council also include that language that was articulated this evening. So, I support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Huff.
I do agree with our manager as well as my colleague here on board. I think that the approval of such language would also further our Carson Unlimited thing that we do use here in our city, for we have lots of young people that need to have an opportunity as well at a good-paying job and healthcare. Complete.
Thank you. I'm just... Yes, no, go right ahead.
I just wanted to echo the sentiments of everybody else that spoke before, and that's a very fair request. Me personally, this is near and dear to me. I grew up, my dad was a civil engineer, building contractor, so this, you know, it's... What they're asking for is absolutely fair in terms of, you know, the decent living for the workers, right? Having the opportunity to purchase one of these homes that they helped build, the medical support, and everything else that, you know, that has been discussed, so definitely has my support.
Thank you. I just want to ask a question of our Assistant City Attorney. Is this the document that would allow us to add that as a recommendation to the City Council?
I see it as a separate issue. This document is just simply taking tentative parcel maps and tentative track maps that are for condominium projects and changing the approval authority from the Planning Commission to the Director. So, it's an amendment to the city subdivision ordinance. The subdivision ordinance doesn't have anything to do with prevailing wage standards or anything like that. This is just... This pertains to private development. The city is very much in compliance with prevailing wage laws with respect to all the city's public works contracts. The city has its project labor agreement, which provides for the city to, you know, pay prevailing wage for all the city's construction contracts, public works contracts, but this is the private development arena, and more than that, it's... We're actually not even dealing with the zoning ordinance, we're dealing with the subdivision ordinance. So, it's just the process for when a developer is seeking to split their land from one larger parcel into multiple smaller parcels, what the approval authority is. Is the approval body the Planning Commission, or is it the Director? Currently, for... We're only dealing with tentative parcel maps, which is when you're splitting one parcel into four or less parcels, or a map that is for a condominium project, because the subdivision map act says that when you're dealing with a condominium project to create condominium lots, even though it's not technically splitting land into multiple parcels, that requires a map. So, all this ordinance would say is that when a tentative map for one of those two types of tentative maps is currently within the Planning Commission's purview to approve, that would change to the Director's purview. I wanted to clarify one thing in relation to the staff report, which was that the staff report says this change would only occur when the project itself is by right. The way the ordinance is currently drafted and the way the resolution is drafted is not limited to that. It would be a change from Planning Commission to Director approval regardless of whether the remainder of the project is by right. And it wouldn't make the project... It wouldn't make the map approval by right. The Director would have the same level of discretion that the Planning Commission does. It's just that the Director could approve instead of the Planning Commission, and therefore there wouldn't be a public hearing. But I see those issues as separate and distinct from the issue of paying prevailing wage, and I do understand that developers have an option of, you know, what labor to pick and whether they pay prevailing wage, and the Commission can certainly provide, you know, a recommendation to Council or make a, you know, direction to staff on that issue, but I would keep it separate from the ordinance that's being proposed.
Thank you so much, and I have another question for you, but before I do, I sort of explained that at the last meeting when we opened the public hearing, because there was some misunderstanding as to what this particular item would do, and it is, as our city Assistant City Attorney explained, is strictly about maps and track maps, and that's all it's dealing with. But I hear what you're saying, and as has been identified, and we do agree. One thing I know about the mayor of this city, and I have sat in on many council meetings where if it's a project that would include workers, she would demand prevailing well... wages, I'm sorry. She would also demand that you had as many... A certain percentage be Carson hires. She would also demand all of the things that you brought up tonight, the two gentlemen who spoke, that you brought up tonight. It comes up, as our City Attorney said, under the private sector of now you're ready to actually go forth with the project. So, it is not lost on the city, there are some things, and then I think, for the times that I observed, it was put in the conditions of the agreement before the project was approved. So, it's not something that, you know, you guys are never left out of that, at least since this mayor has been in place. So, we want to make sure we keep that going, but I did want the City Attorney to address it to make sure you understand what we are able to do in this particular... With this particular item. We good? Okay. Thank you. Wanted to do that. And then the last thing I want to address to our Assistant City Attorney is there are some who may view this as reducing the power of the Planning Commission. Would you like to address that?
Well, it doesn't reduce the power of the city. It just changes the decision-maker for these two types of tentative maps, from the Planning Commission to the Director.
Right.
But the Director would have the same level of discretion and authority in whether to approve or to deny, whether to condition. That same level of power that the Planning Commission would normally have would just be in the hands of the Director instead.
And we had a similar situation when we had it come forth regarding warehouses, et cetera, et cetera, or the size of certain projects. It was under a certain, you know, area, a certain square footage, et cetera, et cetera. We moved some of those projects over to the purview of the Director as well, did we not?
Yeah, but that would be... That's a separate item, because that's... I believe you're referring to, you know, the traditional arena in which the Planning Commission operates, which is the zoning ordinance.
Yes, yes.
This is actually the map, the process...
Yeah, no, I know this is different, but I'm saying, we didn't lose any power, we just escalated... We moved it so that things could move a little faster, and as I look at this, when we're looking at maps and track maps, et cetera, et cetera, we're looking at a process that was taking longer because of all of the things that had to happen before it would get to an approval point. So, that is what we're looking at, right?
Yeah, this would expedite the process because it wouldn't require a public hearing, the Director could act on it, and normally, in some cases, I think what the staff report was alluding to is that in many cases nowadays, residential projects are administrative approvals or can be, depending on the project.
Right.
And in that case, a lot of times, the only approval that would need to go to Planning Commission would be on the map.
Yes.
And so this would change it so that now it would be a full administrative approval off the board, across the board, which would streamline the review and approval process, make things quicker, and a lot of times, this would involve residential condominium developments, and so those involve homeowner... Homeownership opportunities in the city, and it would be more consistent. It's not that it's required, but maybe more consistent with the spirit and intent of kind of the new general plan and the new housing element to help streamline that process for those types of projects.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions from my colleagues? If not, then I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move to approve, and I would like to have staff and City Council consider language to support labor standards, prevailing wage, apprenticeship, local hire. I understand exactly what this ordinance is or the subdivision ordinance, but I do would like to still direct staff and for City Council to consider to include language. Thank you.
I second that.
So, moved by Chair Diaz, Vice Chair Diaz, and second by Commissioner Doc Dossel, and will you call the roll for the vote, please?
Madam Chair Thomas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Diaz?
Yes.
Commissioner Doc Dossel?
Yes.
Commissioner Huff?
Yes.
Commissioner Infume?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Monteclado?
Yes.
Motion carries, eight zero.
Thank you. And now we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which will be item 8A, which is a public hearing, conditional use permit, and our presenter will be Richard Garcia, Assistant Planner. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. Tonight, I will be presenting to you Conditional Use Permit 3-24 on behalf of JJ Market located at 16502 South Main Street. So, our proposed project, our applicant is trying to obtain a CUP for alcohol beverage sales at this location, 16502 South Main Street. The previous two tenants had been operating without the CUP, so this owner is doing their due diligence to establish this location legally and appropriate... With appropriate entitlements. They took ownership in early January 2024, and we've been working with them since to try to get everything properly submitted and approved with the department for them to operate. So, they have zoning verification letters submitted with our department for their business license clearance. They're working with ABC as well to get the clearances required with them. This location is an L-shaped commercial center that was approved and developed in 1989 through DOR 473-89. The original business operation began in 1995 as Gardena Main Plaza Liquor Market. Again, we're trying to legalize and bring this new business owner into compliance with the Carson Municipal Code requirements, and we proposed and the proposed use as required by Section 9141 of our municipal code, which is the industrial section. This is some site information of 16502 South Main Street. The general plan land use designation is light industrial. The current zoning designation is manufacturing light with a design overlay. The size of the location is about 15,077 square feet, and again, I reiterate, the commercial plaza has a few restaurants and a few vacant units as it stands right now. Surrounding uses is heavy industrial and light industrial. To the north, there's a muffler shop, some warehouses to the south and east, and storage to the south and west, sorry, and to the east, there's storage. Access to this location is via two driveways, one on Main Street and one along Gardena Here's an image and an aerial of the project site location. Again, located in manufacturing light, design overlay zone with a light industrial designation by the general plan. Subject property is located on the southeast corner of Gardena and Main, and although this location is old industrial, it was approved through a development, again, the DOR I mentioned previously, in 1989. This is a site plan of the existing plaza. The shaded area on the top right is the proposed area for this business and this operation that is requesting the CUP. The site currently has 24 standard parking spaces and one accessible parking space. This is the floor plan of Unit 4, which is the unit that the applicant is proposing to occupy. So, on the left side, you can see the counter space, and on the top right, you'll see the walk-in cooler, and all those areas along the left and top are only accessible behind the counter, so only the business owner or employees, if any, will be in those areas. Everything on the front side would be the public space, commercial, retail space that would be available to the public. Here are the proposed hours of operation for this location, Monday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Sunday from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Below is a section of the code, Carson Municipal Code 9147.3, hours of operation for industrial zones, which require 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. limitations. Our Section 9141 in industrial code, when referring to alcohol sales in industrial zones, refers to this Section 9138.5 for compliance and being one of some of the findings for approval. As required by this section, this location is not within 300 feet of any school, park, or church, and the second condition is that the license type that they're requesting has a limit in the city. The city has a limit of 70 off-sale licenses for alcohol. Through some research with the California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, also known as the ABC, they control the licensing for alcohol sales, the city of Carson only has 49 active off-sale licenses. The public notice for this project was posted on-site, the agenda was posted 72 hours before the hearing, and it was also mailed to property owners and occupants within 750 feet. The CEQA review for this project, we believe, is categorically exempt under Class 1 existing facilities pursuant to Section 15301 of the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA Staff's recommendation is approving a resolution of the Planning Commission of the city of Carson, finding a CEQA exemption and conditionally approving Conditional Use Permit 3-24 for alcoholic beverage sales in conjunction with an existing convenience store located at 16502 South Main Street. I'm available for any questions, and we also have the applicant's representative here just in case you guys have any questions for them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. To my colleagues, any questions? Okay. I do have a few. So, I did visit the site, of course, and I did see the posting for the public hearing. A lot of things went through my mind when I read the staff report and everything with this request. Having been in the city for... I'm in my 54th year. I've seen a lot of things come and go, and there were just things that stuck out in my mind that I was curious about, and so I'm bringing them here tonight. I did notice there's a restaurant on the property as well. It all seems to be one business, but I'm... I have to ask, because I did not go inside, I did go into the parking lot and observe, but the... You said there's some vacancy there, so I'm thinking the restaurant is on the north side of the strip mall, and then this location, which is a deli, is on the south, in the south corner. Is that accurate?
So, if you observe this image, the proposed area on the top right is the applicant that we're working with right now. That's the area that they're proposing.
So, there is only one owner of... How many owners are we dealing with with the entire complex?
I don't know if it's split into separate owners, but rather than leases to different businesses.
Okay, so, let me phrase this a little differently. The strip mall may be owned by whomever.
Correct.
The proprietor of the actual restaurant and the proprietor of... The proprietor of the actual restaurant and the proprietor of the deli, is that what it is now, right?
Convenience store is what's been.
Convenience store, okay, convenience store. Is that one person or more than one?
No, separate businesses, separate owners.
Separate owners.
Yes.
So this owner who is at the convenience store is requesting a liquor license to sell there. Do they currently sell beer and wine there?
It's not currently operating, but they previously did. They do have ABC licenses for this location specifically.
So when you say it's not currently operating, when I was there, they're operating?
The restaurant or the convenience?
No, 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 I'm talking about the convenience store now.
I've visited the site, and it's been closed the times I've gone.
So maybe it's closed with people coming in and out. I was, I was there, and I'm watching people go in and out in this very area, and some sitting there eating, right?
The restaurant is right below the proposed area, so I don't know if that's the area you're referring to, because there definitely is people in that one.
The restaurant is on the north corner.
There, there's two.
So there are two?
Correct.
It appeared to be in between, there's just a lot going on there.
Yeah.
Okay, so help me to understand.
So there's a restaurant on the, I don't have the pointer.
Okay.
But closer to the Gardena side, which is the top left.
Yeah, that's north.
Restaurant there, yeah.
Yeah.
Proposed area is our current applicant.
Which is on the south end?
Yes. Right below the proposed area, so I guess if it would be on the west side, the bottom portion where the five parking spots are, that's where the, I believe it's a pupuseria. That's a restaurant that currently operates every day.
Okay, so when you, when you go in off of Main, and you go into the entry, because the, the other off of Gardena is an exit. So you got in and exit, right? Off of Gardena.
Yes.
You exit onto Gardena.
Mm-hmm.
You come into the complex from Main Street. When you enter, then of course you have to make that turn for parking. You got parking on both sides.
Yeah.
So in this corner, that's what we're dealing with, right?
Yes, but not the corner where you see all the people. It's like, if you keep walking, there's a walkway, and it leads to a door behind, currently gated because it's not operating.
Okay. All right, I got it. Okay, so now, I know this isn't part of the project, but what you have is a sign that says beer, wine, et cetera, et cetera. And currently, there's no one in that complex with an alcohol license. Are they selling alcohol there at all?
I did not do research on that one. If there's sit-down restaurants, they are permitted right, by right, so we wouldn't have a CUP on file for them. So I'd have to go to ABC to try to get that information.
Okay, so we don't know what's, what's happening at the restaurant, which is on that same plane. And I will just be, one of the things that happened over the years under a different mayor in Carson was a whole discussion about alcohol being sold in the city of Carson. You're kind of new, so you may not know about ADAP. Yeah. Any of my fellow colleagues are familiar with ADAP at all?
They don't.
Yeah, okay. And, and their function, what they drug, alcohol, all of that prevention. And it's always been a big thing in the city, and they celebrate the sobriety, the, all of that of the city. And so over the years, we have had mayors to support ADAP. Our mayor today certainly does. Over the years, we've had issues that came up with the discussion of alcoholism. I did not have time to do any research, so I'm bringing it here tonight. I'm not sure if there's a resolution out there, may not be, and, and maybe our city, Assistant City Attorney could tell, a code. I'm not saying it's a municipal code, but I know the goal in this city was to reduce the sale of alcohol. Definitely didn't, we fought drugs, we did all of that in this city. And so I'm just wondering, do we have anything on our books, resolution-wise, or anything that says we're really not trying to encourage permits for selling alcohol? So I'm gonna defer to you.
We have limits in our existing zoning ordinance about the number of on-sale and off-sale sites.
I saw that forty-nine and the seventy, I saw that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's, we have that in the current code, and then, of course, the phase-two zoning code that's coming, we'll have an opportunity to look at those regulations again more comprehensively as far as regulations of, you know, land uses that involve sales of alcohol. But to some extent, it is an ABC issue rather than a, city has land use authority.
Right.
But the permits for, you know, regulating alcohol sales, the details of it and all that, is ABC.
Right, and I do understand that, but I know that, that we have made a conscious effort to reduce the number, even though forty-nine and seventy, you did your homework, I understand that, but we're only at forty-nine for a reason. Because there was, and, and I'm gonna go back, when we got the theater here in the city of Carson, a big issue was, could they sell alcohol in the theater? And the council shot that down because they didn't want it to happen. There was an issue that came up about selling alcohol at special events. There are certain events, one that I know of in particular, that allows for a separate tent, or whatever you want to call it, where they could have alcohol sold, but the other events refuse to have it. So there is a thing going on in this city, and it has been going on for a few years, to reduce and the, the number of alcohol-selling places, you know, sell, you sell it, it goes off-site, and whatever happens, happens. So I'm being very cautious about this. You know, I'm not, not beating you up or anything, I just have that history here in the city, and I'm being very cautious of that, because if we are looking at in our general plan and our zoning, we're gonna be looking at that, and this is one of the things that's gonna be addressed, I would not want to see us give the go-ahead when we're gonna be addressing this in the immediate future. That, that, that's my thinking on this right now, and that's why I'm bringing it up. And I don't know if, if I need to do, and I'm willing to do additional research to see where the city stands on this before saying, let's move forward on there. Even though staff is recommending, recommending approval, I'm having some real, this is me, I'm having some issues with it. So now, if you can help me with that, I'm here.
This location is actually already counted in the forty-nine. It wouldn't be raising the number to fifty. Previously, they had a license, there's still a license there currently. It's just, this is a new owner that's coming in to apply for the CUP to do it in accordance with the code, so the number of alcohol licenses would not be increased.
So wait, wait, wait now, let, let's hold, put a pin right there. If this is a different owner, then who, who has the license now?
Licenses can run with the land.
So the license is with the land and not the owner? So if this land already has a license, then why are we giving it a CUP?
This owner does not have a CUP to operate in that. So since he's a new business, the codes is anytime a, a new business comes, they're gonna come through the CUP process. So this gives us the opportunity to take a look at the existing conditions, to see if it fits in within the existing location that they're asking to continue to sell the alcohol at. And so if you didn't think that it was a, if the commission didn't think it was appropriate at this location, that could be a reason to deny it. If the commission thinks that the hours of operation are inappropriate, they could recommend different operations, hours of operation. But this is kind of unique in the fact that they've been selling alcohol at the location since nineteen eighty-nine.
Just for my clarity, and anybody else up here that might be a little confused, they're selling alcohol there now?
No, because they, they're not operating because they came in and asked this, can they do it? And we said, the proper way to do it is ask for a conditional use.
Okay, so there's no alcohol being sold there now?
No, because they're not open right now.
No.
So they're not open. So the existing restaurant and whatever else it is, are they selling alcohol at that location now? Do you know?
I, I, I do not know that. I, I can have that, I can, if you wanted to continue to find out, I can do that, but it's a, that would be a, a different type of license. That would be a on-sale permit, and they wouldn't be.
Exactly.
Right.
Exactly. And, 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 and I know generally restaurants, you know, you know, people go to restaurant, they have food, they want to have, you know, whatever drink they want to have or whatever, and I know that's on sale. They're not walking out with it in their back pocket in a brown bag and all of that. I got it. I got it. Trust me, I have it. I'm not feeling comfortable, this is just one person's opinion. I'm not feeling comfortable. I would like to see a little more research. For me, I would like to have the item continued so that we can look at it a little bit closer because I'm very much concerned about the alcohol being sold. That's just me. I, I will again ask any of my colleagues if you have any thoughts that you would like to share.
Madam Chair, have we opened the public hearing yet? I think we need to do the public hearing before we get into discussions and.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we had, oh, forgive me, I'm very, very sorry. Thank you. Now, we got right into questioning our assistant planner, and I just kind of went off on that. I'm sorry. Yes, let me open the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have any speakers?
We do not.
Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak to this item? Please come forward. Thank you.
Hi Commissioners, how you guys doing?
Good.
It's my first time actually in a public hearing, so. All right, well, so I'm here representing the applicant, Justin Lee. So let me just give a little bit of context. Currently, he works at another liquor store as an employee, he's a sexual sole employee. And one of the reasons why he wanted to start his own business is, from where he works at, it's always a struggle. He's, you know, seen a lot of things in his area, this is not in the city of Carson. So we started this process eight months ago, and he's put over forty thousand dollars into this process already, including all the CUP fees, in addition to other things. So obviously, I completely understand, like, your sentiment with, you know, the issues of alcoholism and how we can address the issue at hand. On the other hand, as Richard has mentioned, this liquor store or this beer and wine licensed store has been in operation for over a decade. So, you know, really ultimately what it is, is just a takeover. I, I believe the last owner operated last, early last year. So in essence, really, nothing changes too much, other than just more of a formality with the conditional use permit. So as this process has been going on for eight months, and we signed the lease with the landlord, a lot of this is contingent upon this going through. So if this kind of delays further, this really puts a lot of pain from our perspective. And I do hope, you know, whatever happens today, you know, that in the future, you guys will definitely do, like, more research to the idea, and for any future applicants, you know, who, who knows what happens then. But we really ask you to be understanding with the situation that we've been dealing with. A lot has been put in to get to this process and to this point. So I, I really implore you to just be pretty understanding, at least this one time. Again, I don't know how the future will look, but thank you, guys, really appreciate it.
Thank you. You, you're representing the owner, and anyone have any questions for him? Yes, Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you. Just out of curiosity, you said that you signed a lease, and I know sometimes there can be deferred payments, or are you guys actively paying on that lease, like, maybe a decreased amount while you're in negotiation?
So currently, during the conditional use permit process, we were anticipating that this process was gonna be done in four months. So the landlord has been gracious, everything was signed. Obviously, if you guys denied the conditional use permit, everything that Justin put in will have been for naught, and that's just kind of where we are on that.
How, how long has it actually taken? It feels anticipated to be four months.
Well, we started this process in last year of August, and we were hoping to wrap up by December, but due to, you know, certain delays as anticipated, you know, we did not anticipate it, but, you know, things come up, and, you know, we're not controlling what the planning committee does, and, you know, they're on their schedule, so we just follow. So, you know, we were hoping that this hearing was gonna go our favor, but obviously, I'm not totally sure where we're gonna go with that, but, but yeah, that's the situation.
Understood. And just to clarify, in that eight months, no one, you guys haven't been operational, you haven't been bringing in revenue?
No, again, since a lot of it is contingent upon the ABC license, and we have been working with ABC's license, and the only one thing that's just contingent is the CUP. So everything is just contingent on this going through, so.
And, and for my colleagues and the staff, just to clarify, when, when we do do a CUP, and I'm not too sure what the CUP cost is, it's kind of a sunken cost. Like, if the CUP goes through, it's fine if the CDP doesn't go through, the cost for the CUP process is, no refund, just, just clarifying. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? So for my clarification, is this a liquor store or a deli? What, what, what is this?
It's, it's just a mini mart, it just sells, you know, snacks.
So it's gonna be a convenience store selling, so if I may do a parallel or comparison, if I go to a service station, and service stations have all of the stuff that they sell in there, minus the service station, that's what you want to have?
Service station as in like a gas station?
As in a gas station, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's pretty much the same thing.
So it's, it's a store without the gas?
Right, correct.
And you sell all the candies and all of that stuff in it, and alcohol in this, in the same.
Right, and, and no hard alcohol is sold, that is not within the licenses, it's just beer and wine.
Okay, good, it took all of this to get to beer and wine. I said in the beginning, the sign says beer and wine. My, when I say alcohol, I'm talking about hard stuff. That's not what you're asking for.
To address the question as well, the current sign that's from the old tenant, I did clarify with our current applicant before presenting to you guys. So J.J. Mark is their proposed sign, that will be changed, but again, they can't process or spend more money on those items without knowing where the project goes.
Okay.
And beer and wine, no hard alcohol.
No hard alcohol?
Correct.
Well, that's where I am. When you say alcohol, I'm thinking alcohol license, what, you know?
Yeah, that's, we read the way our code reads, apologies, it's more clarification.
You should have said that a long time ago, because I'm like, what? What are we talking about? What am I missing here? Okay, all right, so we're not talking about the hard stuff, we're not talking about that, we're talking about beer and wine, which would then be in concert with the land use for the restaurant, what they're selling, et cetera, et cetera, right? On the same thing. All right. Thank you very much.
All right.
Good Lord. Are there any, so now, let me close the public hearing. Let me close the public hearing. Any other public comments? Yeah. No, no, okay, he said, no, not me. Okay, so with that, I will close the public hearing. That brings any further discussion to our board. That brings any further discussion to our board, our commissioners.
Madam Chair. For verification. We are only talking about-
Talking the mic.
Oh, I'm very sorry. We are only talking about the inclusion of beer and wine at your facility. Only beer and wine. That's correct. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Should we include in one of the conditions in Exhibit B, a condition that only beers and wines can be sold in that premises? And no hard drinks, no hard alcoholic drinks will be sold. To make it very clear, because among us, we didn't, you know, at the beginning, it was ambiguous.
Very.
Term, right. So we have to make it very specific in one of the conditions to include that in Exhibit B, that only beers and wines will be sold and no hard alcoholic beverages.
Planning manager, did you want to speak to that?
We can do that. That's harmless. But the license that they're applying for is specific to ABC. So the license that they're requesting, ABC wouldn't permit them to sell anything but beer and wine.
Okay.
So so an approval today would limit the sale of beer and wine due to the type that they're asking for.
That they're asking.
And when they apply and we finalize their business license, we'll put that into the business license, the type specific and notated there as well.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I see it more as part of like the project description than a condition of approval, because getting into the distinctions of what type of alcohol is going to be sold, hard alcohol, beer, wine, that's more of an ABC issue and we understand that they're seeking ABC permits, licenses only for non-hard alcohol. The requirement that we have in our code, that's the reason why we're here, is because our zoning ordinance says, in this zone for alcoholic beverage sales in conjunction with a variety store, drugstore, or mini market, a conditional use permit is required, subject to the provisions of 9138.5, which is like the limitation on the number of permits. But nothing in our code gets into, you know, hard alcohol versus not. That's really more of an ABC thing. We have the land use authority. So I don't, I don't think it would, I would recommend not having a condition of approval that says no hard alcohol and leaving that up to ABC, but we could put something in the, you know, the recitals of the resolution, when it's describing the project, that it's, you know, that the mini mart is seeking ABC permits for not hard alcohol. But I just don't see it necessarily as, you know, it's not really the type of authority that we're exercising. There's nothing in our code that really provides a basis for the distinction between hard alcohol and non-alcohol. We should probably leave that up to ABC and you know, their requirements.
Right, so what I hear you saying is an ABC license in and of itself limits what can be sold.
The ABC license that they get will be a beer and wine license.
Yes.
They would have to get a separate kind of ABC license to have hard alcohol.
So it's not necessary for us to put in there because of the type-
And their project application has informed us that they're not seeking that, that they're only seeking ABC beer and wine. So that's why I say it's more kind of like part of the project description, in which case it's not like they're proposing to do that and we're putting a condition to stop them from doing that. They're not proposing that in the first place.
Got it.
There's no need for the condition. And in addition to that, the condition arguably would be inappropriate because it's more something that's within ABC's purview than the city's purview.
And if they decided that they wanted to sell hard liquor, they would have to go back to ABC and ABC-
And request a license for that.
Correct.
Permit, okay.
Now, a question. If they do that and the ABC approve it, then, or should that transaction, you know, approve that modification between them and, you know, ABC? Should that be considered by the planning commission?
Yes, because ABC will direct them back to the city.
Okay.
Great. All right, George, I think we got it. Any other questions?
I have another question.
No. You cannot. No, I'm kidding. Go ahead.
On Exhibit B, number, number four. It reads, "A modification of these conditions, including additions or deletions, may be considered upon filing of an application by the owner of the subject property or his/her authorized representative in accordance with Section 9173.1 of the zoning ordinance." So I look up Section 9173.1 for the process or procedure addressing the modification of these conditions, additions or deletions. And I have not found in that section a process or a procedure to be followed. So I wonder if staff would address that. And secondly, when we approve, if we approve this, we approve inclusive Exhibit B. And we approve it because of the conditions that are present with us, that are presented to us. Now, if the conditions are modified later, then I'm just wondering, you know, that makes our decision of, our determination of approving it ineffective. Because any conditions here can be modified, deleted, or added. So I wonder if you can address that.
We, modifications that are set in place by the planning commission can only be modified by the planning commission. If for any reason the applicant disagreed with one of the conditions and asked us, we will bring this back to you in its entirety and give you a brand-new presentation and address the specific condition and ask what the commission thought and provide a recommendation.
Okay, so just for clarification, any modification, addition or deletion, needs approval of the planning commission?
Substantive, like so if it's a word that's out of place, a comma, a period's missing, no.
No, yeah.
But something substantive, yes.
Okay.
You're done now, right?
Let me see.
No, you're not. I think you're done. You're done. I'm going to close the discussion and I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm done.
I'd like to move to approve conditional use permit, CUP 3-24. Request for approval, conditional use permit, alcohol beverage sales at the convenience store has been presented by staff today.
A second.
Been moved by Vice Chair Diaz and second by Commissioner Johnson.
Do you want to, Madam Chair, should we request, I was for Commissioner Diaz, did you want to make any modifications per the discussion or just staff recommendation?
Staff recommendation.
Okay.
Okay, so moved on second. Roll call for vote, please.
Madam Chair Thomas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Diaz?
Yes.
Commissioner Tactaso?
Yes.
Commissioner Huff?
Yes.
Commissioner Infume?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Montecarlo?
Yes.
Motion carries, eight zero.
Thank you very much. That wasn't so painful. It was close, but we made it through. Thank you, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for coming out. So we look forward to you moving forward with your project and having a successful business here in Carson. And I'm looking forward to all the graffiti to not be there anymore and just make it look nice, because that's a rough area over there, I tell you. It leaves a lot to be desired, but thank you so much and tell the owner as well. Alright, next item on here will be the manager's report.
Thank you. I don't have much to report. I've been promising that you're gonna be very busy and I hope that you like to read. We have a draft of Phase Two. Over the next couple of meetings, I'm gonna start to introduce some of the Phase Two to you. I don't want to get too far out in front of our public outreach. That's gonna be a part of this. And so just a sign of things to come. Get ready, get ready, get ready. That concludes my report.
Thank you. If I need new glasses, after all this reading, I'll let you know. Thank you so much. Commissioners, we'll start to my right with the returning Commissioner Monteclaro. How are you? It's good to see you.
I'm good, Madam Chairman. And I believe you noticed something new in me.
I see your hair is longer. You're looking like a hippie. It's nice. What else is it?
It is an order from my commander in chief, my wife. That I should sport a long hair and be a rock star.
Oh, well, you look like a rock star then. Alright, tell her she got it right.
So I'm happy to be back. Been away, I've been in, around the world or something. It was enjoyable, a learning lesson for many things, many occasions. I, I I had an eighteen thousand steps in a day, which is, you know-
Say what now?
Eighteen thousand.
Eighteen thousand?
Eighteen thousand. That's about-
Well, you did enough for me, didn't you? I don't have to do any.
I'm happy to be back healthy and safe and be of service to our city and the community.
Welcome back, but I'm not gonna let you ask no long questions. You already know that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, it's good to have you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you. Very excited to be here, excited to keep a small business in our city. I understand post-COVID that a lot of small businesses have been through some things and even after that, we were they're running amok, robbing and breaking windows and vandalizing them. So it's super exciting to see a small business in place. We have to get them the Public Works graffiti removal number. I saw the site too. We'll share that. But excited to keep them here, not have a vacant space and it brought me back to a thought about even the CUP process. I may speak to Director Palmer about it. I remember owning a small business and not even, not going to a municipality because of their CUP process. And as soon as they explained to me, hey, you know, you pay me, we make a decision. And, you know, if our decision sticks, you start your business. If our decision doesn't stick, we keep your five thousand dollars. And I'm like, that's crazy to me. So we didn't even apply in that city because we're new business owners. We didn't have five thousand dollars for a maybe. So that's, that's the position that, that man is in and that a lot of these young business owners are in and just as I look at empty places in our city and other cities and want to compete with other municipalities for the most business-friendly city, I just want to keep that in mind as we make our decisions and even how it impacts other sites. If we gave a no to this site, it would have immediately devalued every other site with an ABC license. It'd be a trickle-down effect and no one would ever buy these sites and, I mean, they can't be much more than mini markets, given the space. But just happy that we were able to move it forward and gives me ideas to try to create incentives for small business to come in without losing their five thousand dollars.
So that means now you're gonna open one too?
I'm complete.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay, Commissioner Infume?
I don't have anything to report, but I do want to say kudos to our commission. You guys, Diane, if you hadn't really dug in there, I didn't know. I thought it was hard alcohol too. So you guys, make sure we are on top and know what we're asking for, what they're asking for and what we're gonna approve. And I want to say kudos to our planning manager. He is just on top of it. You just kind of like moved into that position and it just fits you. So, oh, so you're awesome. So I'm complete.
He got married and it upped his game. That's what that was. Just upped his game.
I'm down today, I'm noticing.
You see, okay, I was gonna tell him later, but alright. Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
Thank you. Another great meeting. Thank you to our staff, to our commissioners. And I do have one request and it's just a request that we have a pointer at our commission meetings, because I had actually thought about this previously and it's nice to be able to point, yeah.
A pointer for the presenter or a pointer for the commission as well?
For y'all to have, so that-
For the presenter?
For the presenters.
You don't want us to have one, no.
Yeah, that way, you know, when a commissioner or a member of the public has a comment, then you can just, you know, move the pointer and I guess still have access to the microphone. Okay, thank you.
Are you complete?
Yes, I'm complete.
Alright, Commissioner Tactaso?
Good evening. It's always a joy to be part of our meetings here tonight. I reiterate what has already been said, but hats off to our staff for always doing, you know, the necessary work to make our meetings as seamless as possible. It's always nice to see our community show up and they showed up. That did look really nice, as you mentioned earlier. And yes, I agree with what Commissioner Johnson mentioned. Unfortunately, you know, that pandemic really did affect a lot of people, small businesses in particular. And it's nice to see, you know, this resurgence of sorts and I think Carson would make a great home for them and other small businesses. It's just a matter of us kind of, you know, reminding the community that we are definitely, you know, a place that they should be coming to. Right? And, and yes, to your point too about, you know, some areas of the city are rougher than others. You know, having having owners that, that really do take ownership of their space is absolutely going to help. And it goes back to, and I know Commissioner Johnson mentioned, giving the number to Public Works, right? But it's also necessary for our community. You know, if you see something, say something. That's definitely something that we, I think I'm preaching to the choir here, but to the greater community, we should all take that to heart and, and take care of our city. That completes me. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Huff?
Good evening again. It's a disadvantage to be the last one, Commissioner, to say something, but I will just say, I ditto all of the comments from my fellow commissioners. I think tonight was definitely proof and the pudding as to how we each perhaps see things a little differently and have to dig in. ADAF, I'm always thinking about alcohol near the school. That's my trigger, but I too, it took us a long time to get back to that. Beer and alcohol, that was, it took a long time. I had already vetoed everything else that I wrote down, but I'm glad that we were very thorough. Thank you, Madam Chair, as well as my commissioner for dove into that. And certainly, as I said, I ditto, especially if you see something, say something. There's a lot going on in our city because there's a lot on the news or whatever too, and some people are being motivated by that. But in Carson, we want to keep it to the standards that we've always had our city. So please, thank you staff, welcome back, Ben, everybody. This is just- This is just a classy place to be. I'm complete.
Thank you, Vice Chair Diaz?
Thank you, good evening. No report this evening. Just want to concur with my fellow commissioners' statements, everything that's being said. I couldn't agree more with, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask our Assistant City Attorney, who is back with us. Do you have any statement you'd like to make tonight? You're good? Okay, so I have a couple of things. We approved the In-N-Out Burger on Avalon at the Carson Mall, right? And as I remember it, the entrance into there, there was one lane. For the queuing up cars, there was one lane. But there was space to have a second lane there. The idea being that that queue might get so long until it would block traffic. That's what I remember. You can check me on that, and I wish you will, because there is still only one lane. There's still that space. But there are not two lanes to go into the shopping area. Now, once you get in there, you've got two lanes that are going around to help that queuing that's on the actual mall property. But on Avalon, when you make the turn, or if you're going across Avalon traveling south, or if you make the turn, you're coming off of Del Amo and you're traveling south, that queuing up lane at that light, where you would make that left going east into the, to get to In-N-Out, that line on some, at certain times, is so long until the queue, the turning lane comes out, it blocks the traffic in the lane that could go forward, south. You follow me? And I've been in it several times now. And I'm like, wait a minute. When we approved this, we said there will be two lanes for queuing so that that would not happen. That's not the case there. But if I'm, you know, confused, I thought we talked about that. Because that was one of the things that was very important to me at that time. Talk to me.
I'll review the conditions?
Thank you.
And make the appropriate adjustment.
In-N-Out is very successful. We knew it would be. And there's always a long line getting in there. Now, once they get over there, they've got two lanes to go through. But getting off of Avalon, that queue is so long. And so what you have is the queue coming out like this. And then cars that want to go straight, they can't because the other two lanes are already backed up. You understand what I'm saying? So then you have cars trying to pull out to get into, pass the queue, to get back into the lane to continue to go south. And if we need to talk about it afterwards, I can draw you a diagram. But during the, I'm going to call it rush hour, you know, breakfast, lunch, you know, around that noon, 1:00 or whatever, you go through there around those times and you are in a queue. And there's all this space up here. But the people who want to get to that space in that lane can't get there because the queue has wrapped around. And those cars aren't moving until the signal that allows them to turn. So you follow what I'm saying? Okay, thank you. But that was one of the things that we liked about the project is because everybody was talking about the queuing up. It's just like on the opposite side of the street, right? On the west side of Avalon, you've got Raisin Cane and you've got Chick-fil-A, right? And so the idea was you don't want them queuing up in the main lanes that allow the traffic to continue to flow on Avalon. So I think we need to look at that again. There is space to put a second lane there. We need to utilize that so that there are two turning lanes going into the mall parking lot towards In-N-Out, okay? That was my one thing. And then number two, just want to remind Carson residents, State of the City address is happening on the 20th. So if you have not put it on your calendar to attend, you're going to miss a grand event. Every year, it has been a grand event since our mayor, Lula Davis Holmes, has been presenting. It is an event that apparently the tickets are at a premium because people from other cities are trying to get in. And we're trying to have enough room just for our residents. So if you're not planning or you haven't put it on your calendar yet, you might want to do that. It's going to be quite an event. So I just wanted to say that. And let me just say, I really do appreciate my colleagues on this planning commission. I think you're awesome. I appreciate it. I know that you're doing the work, you're doing the reading. And I know that you're driving by these properties, as am I, and seeing it firsthand. And so I really appreciate all that you do in serving. Appreciate the staff. And Laura, welcome back, to you, too. It's always good to have you. Thank you for all that you do to set things up. You've got water up here for us. You've got everything just nicely laid out. So great job, we appreciate you. And that's all I have. With that, meeting is adjourned.